All right, that will do it for our public speaker. We will now get started with our regular meeting. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Edwards. Present, Counselor Adams.
Present.
Present, Counselor Rook. Absent, Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present, Counselor Walsh. Absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Present, Counselor Regge. Absent, Counselor Twigs.
Present.
Present, Counselor Shea.
Present.
Present, Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present, Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present, Counselor Williams.
Present.
Present, Counselor Ramos.
Present.
The counsel and our guests, please stand for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please recognize the counsel in seat number three.
Counselor Rook.
I did receive communication from counselors Walsh and Ash, who are feeling a little bit under the weather, so they will not be joining us tonight. Counselor Williams.
Report of committee.
Let's do, let's go with item number, yes, let's do reports of committee.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I chaired the Maintenance Development Committee this evening. I received the call from Counselor Walsh, who said she was under the weather somewhat, and asked me to run the meeting for her. We met at 5:30. Counselor Gomez was in attendance, so we did have a quorum. Also, we had Pat Sullivan, Peter Garvey, and then Counselor Fenton joined us at the end of the meeting. And you have a packet on your desk, gentlemen, regarding statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority regarding the perspective, schools that are going to be submitted by the city, schools that need roofs, windows, doors, and the HVAC, which will be Harena, that's all part of it. And Brightwood, we, Brightwood is on a fast track now, so that's not part of this, that's moved on past this stage. Also, you have the Homer Street School here, and also, I'm happy to see that Lincoln is also on this list. So hopefully, within the years coming ahead, we'll have a new Homer and a new Lincoln. But with that being said, I'd like for Pat Sullivan to come up. Mr. Sullivan, and are there any questions of the distinguished gentlemen? May you answer them?
Counselor, are you asking to take that item up?
Yes.
Is there any objection? All right. Counselor Shea. Okay, we have to call the item. Mr. Clerk.
That's, uh...
All right, seventeen. Item number seventeen.
Item seventeen, authorizing the submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Commission. Counselor Shea.
Pat, I wonder if you could maybe give a little detail on, when I look at this list, I clearly know that Homer probably, if not Lincoln, are the two oldest elementary buildings in the city. So I, I don't know, I think the plans are eventually to replace Homer, and I don't know what we have for Lincoln. But in looking at the list, Bowles Elementary School is fairly new. At least, I know time flies, but when I was on the school committee, it was a brand-new building. High School of Commerce, we rehabbed. And Sumner Avenue School had a total rehab, so...
Sure, so I can answer that.
What are we doing at those schools that were, they're so new that we, that they're on a list here?
The roof projects, Counselor.
I don't know what you mean by five over a seven. Is the seven a more important number?
Those are the MSBA's categories, so five is for either a roof or a window project, and a number seven priority is for a new building. So it's just their coding of how they process or put the categories of schools. So the roof projects include Bowles, Milton Bradley, Commerce, and Sumner. Unfortunately, when you were on those committees, they only put a 15-year roof on those buildings, so they're in the 20-year age since they've been rehabbed, so it's time for new roofs.
I mean, we, not to interrupt you, but the bond on those buildings was longer than the life of the roof?
Yeah, I wasn't involved with that department at the time, so I can't answer. We, working with our finance department now, we're putting 25 and 30 roofs on our buildings. For windows and doors, it's South End, Middle, and Talmage.
Well, I can see that. My concern is that where we're probably still paying on bonds for Bowles, Commerce, and Sumner Avenue, that we would be back in here.
Well, the roofs have now exceeded 20 years in age. They're leaking, and we need roofs on those buildings. So that's why we have worked together to put these projects forward to the council. It's just time, they need to be done.
Okay.
But, Counselor Williams. Those are my exact questions in the meeting, and you might want to add Milton Bradley to that list also.
Well, Milton Bradley is quasi questionable because it was an existing building, and I don't know what we did when we bought it. We will change it into a classroom.
Two years ago, you did the back portion of the roof through the MSBA, so now this is for the front portion of the building, the historic part of the building, and the addition that's right behind the original building.
I'm surprised, then SciTech, which was a building in this category, Milton Bradley...
Again, you put 10, 15-year roofs on a building, they're only going to last 10, 15 years.
I understand that.
For a little bit of more money, the city could have put a 25 or a 30-year roof on them, and that's what we're doing now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I guess, I think now, councilmen, they're going to use, my question, the same questions that we bonded for these, they use a 15 to 20-year roof. Now, I guess the thinking is they're going to use a 30 to 40-year roof?
If I may, I mean, at one time, on some of these buildings, we had an attempt to not make them flat roofs also, but we can't get away with that, so...
Sure, yeah. So Milton Bradley and Sumner Avenue have already been paid off about two years ago, and Commerce is being paid off. The last payment for Commerce is going to become in this year's payment. So those buildings will be completely paid off.
We're just about paying out the bond, and we're starting over. It's just that it's striking when you look at the list and know the history, that you see these schools that we just did, and then sitting at the bottom of the list is Homer, which is the oldest elementary school in the city, and we're still, you know, although I think our plan there to get rid of Homer, I hope.
Yeah, no, we're pushing hard for Homer.
Same with Lincoln. Lincoln's got to be in the same category.
Correct. I mean, the top ones would be Brightwood, Homer, DeBerry, and Lincoln are the ones that we're looking for.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Shea, I've been screaming Homer Street for 15 years. That's how long I've been screaming.
That school is so old, I went there.
Oh, God.
And I thought it was new.
Pat, I mean, and, Mr. President, it was a full recommendation made by Counselor Gomez, and the full committee voted to endorse this, it'll move our situation much further. And remember, we have over $400 million invested in roofs and windows and new schools, so the School Building Commission's been very good. This doesn't mean you're going to get it. Just a lot of interest. They come and they interview you. This doesn't do anything, from my understanding. Am I correct, Pat?
Yes.
But it doesn't mean you're going to get it.
These are just statement of interest for...
Thank you, Counselor. These are statement of interest showing that we have need in the city. They will come out and do a review, and then they'll decide to invite us into the next phase of the project, which is design and funding.
Success, 80 to 20?
Eighty percent, yes.
Eighty to 20 ratio. Okay, thank you.
I get to squeeze in one more comment. Are we still getting a percentage from school building on, you know, way back, we used to get 92%? Do we get any percentage on these buildings?
Since it's financial, I'll let TJ answer that question.
Might just soften the blow, that's all.
It runs parallel to our debt schedule, so we are, for Commerce, still receiving MSBA reimbursement as part of the prior grant program, as opposed to the way the program works now, where you submit bills as you pay them, and you're reimbursed at...
We get some discount.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. First, we did discuss these in the Finance Committee meeting earlier, and we go along with what Counselor Williams suggested. Counselor Fenton, and Counselor Twigs, and I were at the Finance Committee. This is one of the items we discussed there, so just want to support this from that standpoint. But I did have a couple of questions. One is, these, just so everybody knows, these start out as 80/20, but they don't end up as 80/20. Depending on how much of the project is reimbursable and current costs of construction, et cetera, we can end up with a 70/30 split or even a 60/40 split. It's not meant to be bad news or anything, or, you know, warning that we're doing anything wrong. It's just that we need to be pretty careful on using the 80/20 thing. We don't get 80/20. We're in the 80/20 program, but the net effect of the whole thing is not 80/20. We end up spending more than 20% of the cost. That's just the way it's working. Hourly costs are going up incredibly, the cost of, I believe, if you're not mistaken, maybe TJ, you could help me with this. This isn't at all to take away from the need to do this, but just while we're talking about this, we ought to be talking really the backs of what it is, and what are the limitations on the 80/20, the things that work against it?
Yeah, I mean, so our goal is typically do the 80/20 and try to stick to that to the extent that we can. However, there are projects that we run into, costs that are not reimbursed by the MSBA, and that's those stuff that we work for and through appeal and trying to work with them, but inevitably, there's projects that are not going to be 80/20. We have Kennedy and Kensington, which will not be 80/20 by the time everything's said and done, just because of the work that, around the windows and doors needs to be a lot more work than we anticipated in our original application. The MSBA says we're not going to participate in that piece of it because that's not what we approved as part of the statement of interest, which is the windows and doors. So you're absolutely right, projects can come in less than 80/20, similar to the project we've done in the past, and we try to do the best. Roof projects, typically, we stick to the 80/20. Windows and doors, there's a few variables in there that can change it. New buildings, we run into a lot of the ineligible expenses that we need to cover the costs of.
So separately from this, we can talk about it, but would you have maybe a list of some of the recent projects, and what the real ratio was? We're in the 80/20 program, but it really came out to be 68/32 or something.
Right, so if it's beyond the 80/20, we need further authorization or further discussion. We'll come back to the council, explain what the differences are, why it varied from what the original application was, and then ask for the council to support it.
That's fine. I don't want to make a big deal of it tonight, but I do want to set the record straight, to very curiously, end up with 80/20. Of course, Brookings was, I think, 100%, and I do have one question on Brookings, just to the point of the 15-year roof. That was our most recent new building, if I'm not mistaken, over the couple of years ago this time. What roof did we put on?
I mean, I'd have to double-check, but we've been doing the 20 to 30-year roofs for all of our project for that exact reason. We don't want to be here again having to redo roofs when we don't have to.
What's the typical length of a bond that we would have on a school?
20 to 30 years, depending what the structure would look like.
So to Counselor Shea's point, when you have a 20 to 30-year bond, and the roof lasts 15, we're in a, you know, it's not really a good situation.
Right, so we, to any project we issue, we try to match up the useful life. I mean, there's state law that dictates it. Building improvements are typically 20 years, but if we know we're just doing a 15-year roof, for whatever reason, we would do a 15-year bond, typically. That doesn't necessarily mean, I don't know what happened for those projects, but the projects that we're doing going forward.
Would Pat be able to, Pat, is that a Brookings roof, do you know about that? I know that's not exactly...
I'll check with Pete Garvey, but I believe it was a 25-year roof that went on that building.
It seems like that should be some sort of standard, if we're not back...
Yeah, it is the standard we put forward when I took over 10 years ago.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. On approving the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent. Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
More than sufficient, order is approved. Are there any other reports of committee? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. As I alluded to just a couple of minutes ago, the Finance Committee met today at 5:00. Counselor Fenton, Counselor Twigs, and myself, so we had all three members of the Finance Committee. We also had TJ, Pat Burns, Steve Lonergan, and Richard Allen. We went over the 12 financial items here. I went over 11 of them with everyone. One of them, I had to step out, and I will step out when we vote on it here for the Assessors Department. But everything that I was there for went along fine. We had a good discussion on all the different items, and I would say we basically approved them all and accept assessors. And Counselor Fenton, I don't know if you wanted to say something on the assessors, I stepped out on that.
Counselor Fenton.
Just that we approved that interdepartmental transfer. The purpose of it, which I'm sure Chairman Allen will speak to later, is to take money from a salary account and put it in OTPS so that they can comply with an MDoR certification year.
Thank you. Are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none, item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is the December revenues versus expenditures report.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have in front of you the December 31, 2016 budget-to-actual statement, represents halfway through the fiscal year, and as you see, our revenues are right at 50%, and our expenditures are just over 50%.
Are there any questions on the report? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Items number three through 12, Mr. Clerk.
Items number three through 12, items number three through 10 are petitions for mobility to install poles in the city of Springfield. Item number 11 is a favorable report from the Board of Public Works regarding the installation of a pole by Eversource. Item number 12 is the installation of a street in the city of Springfield sponsored by the Board of Public Works.
Mr. Clerk, some of these items are still in committee, correct?
Items number three through 10, the petitions by mobility are currently in the Maintenance and Development Committee.
Is there a motion to keep those items in the committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it? Do we want to take up items 11 and 12?
Item 11 is a petition from Eversource for the installation of two new poles, the location of Windover Road. The Board of Public Works returned a favorable report on this petition.
Any questions on item number 11? All those in favor of accepting it, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it? Are there any questions on number 12? All those in favor of the petition, yes, Counselor Williams.
Does that mean there's a petition for 10,000 private ways in the city?
Item number 12 is a...
Is that the number, or...
Is a petition for...
Petition 10.
10 public ways.
How many private, how many private?
It looks like eight. Eight, Core Road, Dennis Street, Druid Hills Road. She has a copy in the packet.
Does anyone else have any questions on item number 12? Seeing none, all those in favor of the petition, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it? Item number 13, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 13 is an order accepting a health services for the homeless grant in the amount of $2,024,451 sponsored by the mayor.
Good evening, Mr. President and councilors. This is our annual health services for the homeless grant. The grant takes care of our medical and dental services at our Worthington Street Shelter and Clinic, as well as a behavioral health grant and a grant to deal with our adolescent health center at 11 Wilbraham Road. That grant is for case management, a nurse practitioner, and a outreach worker.
Thank you. Any questions for the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 14 is the FY '17 Shannon CSI grant in the amount of $552,528.23.
Is there anyone here to speak in? Yes.
Good evening. How you doing? I'm John Lewis, I'm the Shannon Grant Coordinator. Hey, not too bad. Yeah, so we're just hoping to get this approved. We have a lot of exciting events coming up this year, as well as some gang training for all of our agencies and their program staff, which hasn't been done in a while, so we really want to engage the youth in various ways, including academics, after-school social proleisure time, as well as high set completion carpentry skills and community engagement.
Any questions for the council? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, John, did you say you're now the Shannon Coordinator?
Yes.
The job that Earl Harrington used to have?
Correct.
Back, a couple of years back?
Yes.
Could you just talk, do you also coordinate the SSY? What's that one?
Uh, SSYI.
Safe and Successful Youth Initiative.
Correct. No, I do not coordinate that.
You don't coordinate that.
That's coordinated by Anthony Falvo. Anthony Falvo.
And so are you, where do you work and where does he work?
So, yes, I work out of the complex on Carruth Street and the fire station, and then he works as an office out of Roca.
So are those grants serving the same, you know, we talked about these grants in the past, and are they used together with the same group of kids, or do they work in separate?
Uh, somewhat. So we work together in the respect that Shannon primarily focuses on youth 10 to 24, but at a certain point, depending on the youth's assessment, then we refer them to, if they're more at high risk or proven risk, then we refer them to the SSYI program, because they do more hands-on with offenders, and then kind of reintegrating them into the community. Versus Shannon primarily is a prevention, an intervention, so we want to prevent obviously youth from engaging in gang activity or delinquency. At the same time, if they're at a tipping point where they're close to it, we want to intervene and provide them with quality programming at their appropriate age level.
And then Shannon, that's a good explanation. Is the Shannon money used by the police department, or is it also, it also gets parceled out to some nonprofits?
Yes, so, yeah, so the, about 67% goes to the nonprofit communities, and then the police department receives the other 33% for overtime, hotspot, and specific suppression activities.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, I won't be writing the YWCA's this year, but just a quick question, is this an increase from last year, the last fiscal year we had?
This is actually a decrease. So last fiscal year, the city received $717,569 for this. There was a cut on the governor's side of $1,100,000. So naturally, every city across the state was decreased in funding this year. So our award this year was the $552,528.33.
That's definitely unfortunate, so that means that probably less nonprofits will receive.
Absolutely, correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Brad Williams.
Thank you. Just, you said 30% goes to the department?
About, yes, sir, about, it's a little more, it's about 33, 34%.
And what's that used for?
That's used for overtime suppression.
What does that mean?
So suppression would be hotspot patrols, overtime, they come to our community events, the gang training that they're going to be prepared for us, so it really funds the police department's overtime funding for gang, primarily gang, delinquents, gang activity, prolific offenders, et cetera.
And what was the percentage last year?
It was the same. It was the same, yeah. Naturally, they took the largest loss because they received a larger amount, so they lost the $65,000.
When you get a chance, I'd like to have the, see the accounting on that, and actually exactly what they do for the 30%.
Okay.
And I know a lot of, do they patrol the housing projects and all that? That's all part of that?
Correct.
Does the housing authority, I mean, you know, you get a lot of 911 calls to the housing authority, and we respond to them. Has Judge Nebraska come up with a plan to help offset some of the calls that we routinely make on a daily basis? That you're taking money out of a Shannon grant that should be going for youth initiatives, I think, youth intervention, and we're taking on patrols that...
No, absolutely. So I actually spoke with Pam Wells from SHA, who's under Judge Nebraska's, and I know we're actually planning to do, it's almost like a youth group at Robinson Gardens, so I'm actually in the process of locating two officers, one male, one female, to interact with the youth more frequently. And I've spoken with Pam Wells several times about doing more with all of the SHA programs, and I know some of our agencies that are funded work closely with them, such as Indian Orchard, Greater New Life out in Indian Orchard, they work with the SHA complex right next to them.
But I know, because I, I mean, there's going to be a move to gradually get that money more preventive...
Correct.
Than, you know, using it to do patrols, which that Shannon grant, really for youth intervention. So you're almost using a third of it for really police work. And I think the housing, my point was, that the housing authority has to figure a way how we offset those 911 calls. I mean, there was a conversation, I think, with TJ Beck or Richie Allen or someone a few years ago, we had started down that path and we stopped, because we're the cities actually picking up a lot of calls, and I'm not right or wrong, but there's a lot of activity.
Thank you.
But what happens is that you end up taking money from the Shannon grant that could be used for, I think, youth intervention, and we're using it for patrols. So something to talk about, but I think you need to have a conversation with Judge Nebraska at the housing authority, that's what I think.
Absolutely, thank you.
Counselor Gomez.
Out of those 67% that go to nonprofits, do you guys have a list of what nonprofits those are yet?
Absolutely.
You do?
Yep.
Can you, do you have that information with you? Can you state them, please?
I can read it, too.
You can read them, or I'll take the material myself. Do you have a copy for yourself also?
Yes.
Can we get copies so everybody else gets them?
Each counselor should have a copy of that.
I just asked them to do that. I got you.
They'll make copies.
Yeah, thank you.
Better late than never.
Yeah, thank you. No, I just want to make sure where the 67% is going.
Yep.
And then obviously, Counselor Williams already asked about the...
Definitely.
33, yes, correct, right.
Counselor, did you want to hear those organizations?
I'll just say them, and, okay. So we have Dunbar YMCA, $41,550. Greater New Life Christian Center, $45,250,000. MLK Family Services, $40,550,000. New North Citizens Council, $27,646. South End Community Center, $37,550. Springfield Boys and Girls Club, $35,550. Salvation Army, $56,380. YWCA, $23,550,000. And then the Springfield Police Department, $198,070. Then the Shannon Grant Coordinators, $45,000. Real quick, I'm sorry. No, no, sorry. The New North Citizens Council, is that a decrease from what they received last year? That's, everyone received a decrease. Everybody received a decrease? Everybody, we lost $160,000. So did everybody receive the same decrease? For the most part, yes, sir. For the most part? Yeah. In percentages? Correct.
Are there any other questions in the council? All right, seeing no other questions, all those in favor of accepting the grant say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you.
Item number 15, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 15, it is a donation to the elders department in the amount of $1,509.30.
All those in favor of accepting the grant say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Item number 16, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 16 is an order approving a four-year lease to purchase lease-purchase contract term for the school computer equipment.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. I'm here for my annual trip to ask for permission to execute a four-year contract. As you all know, we are, we've moved to leasing computers in the Springfield schools, and we refresh our fleet of computers. We refresh one quarter of the fleet of computers every year, and the most cost-effective option to do that is a four-year lease, and so I'm requesting the permission to execute a four-year contract.
Any questions for the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 18, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 18 is an order for the creation of a revolving fund for technology take-home fees for the school department.
Good evening again. So, we are requesting, we're, the next phase, our digital learning initiative in the schools is to pilot students taking the laptops home. So, as you all know, we've reached the point where we have one laptop for every student in grades three through 12, and we're looking to pilot the opportunity for some children to take them home with the idea that if that goes well, we would expand that program to all schools over a period of time. This particular request is for a revolving fund. Part of our program and the policy adopted by the school committee is that families would pay a small fee that would cover the price of insurance, so if devices are lost or stolen, there's no financial loss to the district or to the city. For, when we go full year, it'll be $20. For this pilot, since it's only a half year, it'd be $10.
Counsel Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank Paul, you're the superintendent, for trying to do what's, do some good creative stuff here. Just in terms of, who, on your pilot program, who will be selected? I mean, is it by a lottery, or at random, or by neighborhood?
Yeah, do you mean in terms of children or schools?
Schools, children?
So, we're doing it on the basis of individual schools, and we're doing it...
What? I didn't hear you.
Say that again?
I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, by school? And we're doing it, basically, we've asked schools to volunteer based on their own readiness, and really what we're talking about in terms of readiness is, we're, we've been phasing in the work with digital learning, and some schools are further ahead than others in terms of giving students assignment and work that really requires the use of a laptop. And so, we asked, really, schools, principals, and the instructional leadership teams and buildings to self-identify if they felt they were ready to give students the kind of assignments that require use of the technology at home.
And the infrastructure at home, I mean, how's that reached?
It's a great question. We're working on a number of fronts. We know that a large number of our families don't have internet at home.
Right.
We have, we're working with Comcast. They have their Internet Essentials Program, which provides low-cost broadband. There are some complications with that program that we're working through, some other things we're looking at, the opportunity to have wireless hotspots, a small number of them in schools that students can check out of the library. So, if they have a particular assignment that they need to have internet at home, they can check that out of the library, so they can have connectivity when they're at home. Ultimately, I think something like Comcast is going to be the best bet where we can get the broadest reach.
So, you're, you're having a conversation with Comcast at this point?
Yeah, Internet Essentials is a program they have nationally, which we want to take advantage of. It provides broadband for $9.95 a month for low-income families.
How much?
$9.95. So, that's for low-income families.
Might as well be a million for some folks.
What's that?
Might as well be a million for some families, $9.99.
Yes, sir, and there are certainly challenges.
I don't mean that in...
No, no.
To be, you know...
Our challenges, one of the challenges is they won't enroll families if they have an outstanding bill, or have had an outstanding bill, and that's problematic for our families. And so, we're aware, we're looking at, you know, obviously, our libraries are an asset, because there's wireless in our libraries.
Remember Comcast, the city has a contract with Comcast. Remember that.
Yes.
And you need to use that as a bargaining chip, because I don't think, from when we first cut the deal with Comcast, I don't think they, TJ knows more about this than I do. I don't know if they lived up to all of their expectations, because business guys vary. They come in, say, "We're going to do this, going to do that." They get here, they haven't done very much. So, I would work with TJ and Comcast. They're supposed to provide so many dollars for education. I don't know if they ever provided any dollars of education that I know of, and I'm, so I think you need to, you need to talk that way, very serious. That's a big contract Comcast has with the city of Springfield.
Yeah.
They make a lot of money.
I appreciate the feedback, and I'm happy to use whatever levers we can.
I mean, that's a big leverage, the contract.
Yeah.
And, and, and part of the license agreement was that an educational incentive was incorporated in that. What that means, I don't know. TJ is much smarter with this than I am. He could probably tell us, but I'm very serious. You need, you gotta, because let me tell you, end of the day, they're not going to do very much. Comcast is tough to deal with, I'm just, you know, and for people to navigate it, the laptops are fine, but then you get home, hardly going to access the laptops with no infrastructure or service at home. So, it's a mute point for some families.
Yeah. If I can just add, the one thing we are also doing is we're training our teachers. The laptops we're sending, they have Microsoft Office, they have applications on them, and we're training our teachers to, you know, when they're sending an assignment home, have kids download the stuff they need before they leave the school to try to mitigate the issue.
Okay, Paul. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On granting the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved.
Thank you.
Item number 19, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 19 is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for West Side Main Street for the sale to Hunt Real Estate Services.
I'm Tom Matthews. I work for the city, and I live in the city. I live at 24 Vesta Street. I work for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Mac Simpson. He's here tonight representing Hunt Real Estate Services. He would like your approval for the West Side Main Street located in the Memorial Square section of the neighborhood. Hunt Real Estate Services plans to build a dollar store on this vacant lot, as well as the abutting prop, excuse me, the abutting property at 2594 Main Street. They plan to build a 9,100-square-foot building that will house 37 parking lot spaces. Their total investment should be around $2.1 million.
Wow.
And will create at least six to 10 jobs, full-time jobs. The city received just one proposal for RFP, and the review committee was in full agreement with the Hunt Real Estate Service proposal. With the new construction on the property, we'll be, we'll see improvement both in appearance and safety in the area, while providing new taxes for the city. Once again, the review committee was in full support of this proposal, and the Hunt Real Estate Service, they had won their bid price for $10,000. If there's any questions, please let us know.
Counselor Gomez.
Um, how much is this property being sold for?
$10,000.
What was the bid? Huh? It was a bid for $10,000?
Yes.
So, he won the bid for $10,000?
Yes. The abutting property at 2594 will be part of the deal when they build the, the new building.
So, you need this property to...
To get the other. And right now, they're going through, trying to clean the property up. They're trying to get environmental specialists inside to clean that up as well.
Yeah, because that, that property needs a lot of work, right?
Yes.
All right. So, you already know that there's some things that need to happen in that parcel? So, okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton, absent, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 20, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 20 is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of 739 Main Street to Rita Caputa Capua.
And now, I'd like to introduce Ralph Kupha...
Capua.
Capua, I'm sorry. He's, he's here regarding the sale of the property at 739 Main Street in the South End Neighborhood. Ralph and his wife have owned this, the abutting property lot since 1990. They plan on to extend the existing parking lot by adding 739 to their, their parking lot and bring the capacity up by 15 spaces. The city received two proposals, and the one that the review committee showed an interest in was submitted by Ralph. The total project invested is about $50,000, and that includes the cost of the vacant land, the site work, fencing, and landscaping. The redeveloped property, again, will improve the appearance as well as the safety for the neighborhood. The review committee supported Ralph's proposal 100%. Are there any other, are there any questions at this point?
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Sir, just have a quick question. Can you just, who is comprised, or who makes up the review committee?
I'm sorry.
Who makes up the review committee?
The review committee is made up by the Office of Planning and Economic Development. We also, we try to get the local city council, who's in that. In this case, it was Councilman Edwards, and, and we try to get a neighborhood person as well.
Thank you.
So, it'd be two city workers, and a city council, and a neighborhood person.
Any other questions for the council? Counselor Twigs.
I just want to check, are you trying to, the parking lot there?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you got a schedule?
Sorry?
We got a schedule when that's coming along.
Spring?
The spring. Thank you.
Good job.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 21, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 21 is an order authorizing the issuing of refunding, is an order for the authorization to issue refunding bonds sponsored by the mayor.
I thank Mr. President of the council. The order before you authorizes the administration to issue refunding bonds if and when we determine if the sale of the refunding bonds would be advantageous to the city. Our financial advisor and the city have worked very closely, and to kind of give you some numbers, that if we choose to refinance the debt associated with Frederick Harris, Edward Bolan, and Vanceickel Middle School, we can save $3.7 million over the course of the next few years. Basically, it's going from a rate from 4.5% to 5% that we sold the debt for, to issuing for, in the market, about 2.1%. So, the savings is significant, and the way it works is that the MSBA will fund the present value of what they owe remaining on these buildings immediately at the $222.6 million that we will actually save on all the interest costs associated with that the next few years. Determination hasn't been officially made yet, but we're leaning pretty closely to issuing the refunding, assuming the council authorizes it tonight.
Any questions for the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending Rule 19 say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On granting the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number twenty-two, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is an order to transfer from contingency reserve to the city clerk's salaries and wages account in the amount of nineteen thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I think, Mr. President, this order, along with item twenty-four, they're kind of linked. The council may recall that the new public records law went into effect for the Commonwealth on January first. It is an unfunded mandate by the state that has us responding to any public records inquiry within ten business days. That is a slight change of how long it takes us to respond to inquiries as it stands today. If we don't respond within ten... excuse me, within ten days, there are penalties associated with that. So, what this actually will do is it's looking to fund two positions. One of will be in the clerk's office. The law sets the city clerk as the custodian of public records, and so everything flows through Attorney Wilson's office, but he needs the support staff to make sure that we're responding within a timely manner. The second one for item twenty-four, if I may speak on that, is to fund another position in the dispatch department. Dispatch department makes up about sixty percent, maybe fifty-five percent of our... all of our public record inquiries, and that's really call for service, all those things that need to be listened to, redacted, and sent out appropriately. So, the one position we have doing it there is actually getting... I use the word overwhelmed, but the calls are just too numerous for them to handle to get within the ten-day period, so they're looking to add a second position there. So, it's an unfunded mandate. We're looking to do a position. This is half a year, or not even quite half a year, probably about a third of a year funding for the remainder of this fiscal year. It will annualize to the full amount in FY eighteen. So, any questions, I'll have to take.
Any questions from the council? All those in favor of suspending Rule nineteen say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Uh, yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number twenty-three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number twenty-three is a budget transfer within a department in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Counselor Allen.
Uh, Mr. President, thanks. Thanks, Mr. President. I would like to recuse myself, because this has to do with the Assessors Department, so I'm just going to step out.
The clerk will make a note. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, honorable members of the council. My name is Richard Allen, Chairman of the Board of Assessors for the city of Springfield. And what we are proposing in this order, it would be the first of potentially two orders this evening. It would be a transfer within the internal accounts of the Assessors' Office, forty-five thousand dollars in salary savings. It would be moved to the professional services account on the other-than-personal services side, and the money would be used to fund valuation services for fiscal eighteen and some leftover expense for seventeen, as well as to perform personal property field collection. We're under a Department of Revenue mandate to complete a nine-year cycle for field collection of personal property accounts, so that's a fairly expensive item. And the overall guiding principle here is we want to move as much of the activity associated with valuation into the first six to eight months of the year to provide more time for, one, DOR review of the new certified values in the fall, as well as to provide ample time for the council to consider tax rates when we get to November. So, this is a state recertification year. It happens... It's for the last thirty-five years, it happens once every three years. The law changed this year with the Municipal Modernization Act, and... excuse me, it changed last year, and this is the... So, this will be a certification year, and after this, we will have four years of interim. So, we're really one of the first communities to be on the five-year cycle with year one being a certification. So, again, I expect to be back to the council in the next couple of months for additional money related to the recertification, but we're just trying to move as much of that activity into the first few months of the year as we can.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of Rule nineteen say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen abstain, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number twenty-four, Mr. Clerk.
Item number twenty-four is a budget transfer across departments in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents, controllers to dispatch.
Are there any other questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of Rule nineteen say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
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 Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Counselor Will... Counselor Hurst. Counselor Ramos.